Great, thank you Beth. Thank you ladies for being here tonight, we're so excited. I'm Lisa Power, I am co-chair of Uptown Alliance, co-chair of Tidy Uptown, and a local resident and retired business owner. So anyway, we have lots of questions to get to tonight, but we're really happy to meet both of you here tonight. And thank you to the audience that's here tonight, spending your time not watching the baseball game. So, thank you, thank you. Alright, we're gonna dive right in, and Rachel will be starting with you, and we are gonna rip that Band-Aid right off. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So you have been quoted as saying that the problems of drug addiction, crime, and mental illness in our city have not been solved by the Democrats, who've been running the town for like forty years. You cannot blame Republicans for these issues, so that's why you changed parties. What aspects of the Republican Party's platform and ideology are you aligned with, and not aligned with? And how do you see those making a meaningful impact in our city?
Thank you, well, I'm Rachel Savage, running for Seattle City Council, position eight. And hello everybody, thank you. Thanks for inviting me to the forum. Yes, I'm a walkaway Democrat, so I was a lifelong liberal, never progressive, but classic liberal. And I have a retail business, a street-level retail business in Capitol Hill since 1998. And, you know, my neighborhood went from being vital, and the stores being full, and people being able to walk around all times of the day and night, and safety, families being able to come. I mean, I used to have my kids on Broadway all the time, to severe mental illness, severe drug addiction, and lack of law enforcement. And so, I started to ask myself, why is this happening in my city? Why am I seeing people smoking fentanyl in front of the grocery store? Why am I seeing severely mentally ill people in psychosis, dirty, wandering the streets? What is happening? And so, I started to ask, you know, who's running this place? And I found that it was the Democratic Party. Republicans have not been voted in in Seattle. And I started, you know, the first thing that got me suspicious about President Trump, meaning people's reaction to President Trump, is the non-stop twenty-four-seven hate. And I thought, okay, wait a minute. Even a clock is right twice a day, come on. This non-stop hate campaign. So I started to pay attention years ago. Like, what is he actually doing? What are the policies? I get his personality is bombastic, and a lot of people don't like it. But what is he actually doing, policy-wise? And I paid close attention to this election as I walked away from the Democratic Party, joined the Republican Party, because they were talking about solving the very problems that are happening in my city. Crime. And a new way, I mean, Trump just put out an executive order about treating drug addiction and mental illness in a new way, to end housing first. HUD is ending housing first, by the way, which means free apartments for drug addicts. And moving to an abstinence-based or drug-free-based treatment. And I know that that's gonna work, because that's how we used to treat addiction in the city of Seattle. The county used to treat that with treatment centers. And so, public safety.
Rachel, you had your time.
Huge, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that, Rachel. Alexis, we're gonna go to you next. It's been said that everyone is sensationalizing Republican versus Democrat in this race. And maybe we're guilty of that too, so sorry. But stripping away those labels, what are three critical distinctions between you and Rachel, policy-wise?
I really appreciate that question. Hi everybody, my name's Alexis Mercedes-Rank, renter, girl who takes the bus to work every day, and have to uplift. I know, in my stump, I often talk about how I waited tables next to the Space Needle. I waited tables at Agave, Cocina, Tequilas, and Lower Queen Anne, so I have a deep connection to the Lower Queen Anne community. And I hope to be able to talk about that a little bit more tonight. But three critical distinctions, I think, that I wanna uplift about my candidacy. You know, I think my opponent's points about the Democratic Party and the ways in which Democratic Party leadership have let down working people are real. I have a strong focus on affordability. You know, I have the support of every legislative district Democratic Party organization in the city, but I'm also strongly aligned with and working with the Working Families Party, which is really pushing a stronger message of affordability and making sure that our city can work for working people. My platform focuses on affordability on the realm of housing, creating better access to transit, but also in terms of balancing our tax code. Washington State has the second-most regressive tax code in the country. We're, the only state that's more regressive than us is Florida, and we are not Florida. And so, I'm really focused on how we can work, not just on the city level, but partnering with the county and the state to try and balance our tax code for just more fairness. And connected with that, I'm also really focused on how we can be able to address a clean, green energy future and thinking about addressing climate change. All of these are really interconnected things when we're talking about addressing the affordability needs, building more housing in our city that is especially focused on supporting working people and supporting working families here within the city of Seattle, and building out a transit system that also connects our neighborhoods, that supports our larger climate goals. And I think all of that needs to be achieved by, through Progressive Revenue Solutions and taking steps to balance our tax code.
Cool. Wow, that was a lot, thank you. Good job. Alexis, I'm gonna stick with you, stay with me a moment. So much has been made, much has been said and made about the moderate swing in the council in the last election cycle, and a possible swing back on this election. But honestly, most voters just want a collaborative, problem-solving council, regardless of moderate, progressive, regardless of labels. So give us some examples, but we're not gonna talk about the S.H.I.E.L.D. law yet. But give us some examples where you collaborated with your city council colleagues whose views may be different from yours, and votes that maybe you took that were intentional compromises. So we'd like to hear about your compromises, and we'll talk about the S.H.I.E.L.D. later.
Yeah, certainly. No, I really appreciate this question, because I think it really speaks to a lot of the work we've been trying to do, just to keep things moving forward. Because that's what people want. And I'm a big believer in like, I'm not going to let perfect be the enemy of good, especially if it means making progress on the things that everyday people want us to be doing. We need to keep things rolling at City Hall. So I'm gonna highlight a couple of examples. There was legislation sponsored by Councilmember Kettle to address after-hours gun violence in late-night lounges. We're talking about establishments that are open like after 2:00 AM. And this was some after-hours legislation that addressed, like, if we had an establishment that had instances of gun violence, giving the city attorney's office a kind of mechanism to be able to address those kinds of establishments. I still had questions about that legislation, but I worked with Councilmember Kettle's office and actually put forward an amendment for data evaluation. So actually allowing us to be able to collect data to see about the number of establishments where this is being enforced, just so we could have data to understand if the policy was working. And I felt like that was a compromise we took, just to make sure, you know, I certainly take the issue of gun violence prevention very seriously. I'm supported by the Alliance for Gun Responsibility. But I still had some outstanding questions about how effective this particular policy would be, but I worked with that office to get this amendment through. The amendment was approved, so now we're doing data collection to see how we can evaluate the success of that policy. I'm sincerely hopeful it helps in addressing gun violence in late-night establishments. The other thing that I'd uplift is, you know, I've actually passed four pieces of legislation this year as a sponsor, a sponsor or one of the cosponsors. And all of those four pieces of legislation have actually gone through unanimously, which I don't think folks would expect from a progressive, given a little bit more of a moderate council. But I was a cosponsor on the legislation that banned algorithmic rent fixing software. And that was a cosponsored alongside Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Strauss, the Seattle S.H.I.E.L.D. initiative. Proud to earn all of my colleagues' support and work alongside the mayor on. And then, I passed a very wonky thing on streamlining permitting for subdivisions, which I know that's not the spicy, exciting stuff that folks want, but we're talking about shaving down months of time off of needless paperwork to keep things rolling. And then, lastly, my Roots to Roots bill, which is an equitable development bill that I was proud to work alongside Councilmember Hollingsworth. I know she put forward a number of amendments that I think really improved the bill. And was proud to earn my colleagues' support on that as well. And lastly...
I think that's time Alexis, sorry.
Oh no.
You're on such a roll, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But thank you, that was amazing, thank you, very good. Rachel, back to you, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so we wanna talk about Washington, the other Washington-led politics, and Trump-led policies. So theories are already impacting us here in Washington State with federal funds in limbo and threats of the National Guard presence in Seattle. You have not shied away from the possibility of welcoming the National Guard, saying effectively that the military is really good at getting stuff done, which I don't think we disagree with. How do you see this playing out in Seattle, especially considering the city would not have control over what the Guard does? And also, given what we are seeing in other major cities where the Guard has been deployed, and tensions have escalated?
Well, I support law and order. That's the big thing. And I think that that's what's causing our city to decline, is a lack of law enforcement. Now, the National Guard cannot come in and enforce the law, but what they're good at is helping in humanitarian emergencies, which we are in with this fentanyl epidemic and the severe mental illness epidemic. And so, the National Guard could come in and build us hospitals very quickly, these long-term residential treatment centers that I believe the city of Seattle should build. But the National Guard could come in and build temporary ones in ninety days and staff them with doctors, nurses, and get our severely mentally ill and severely drug-addicted the help that they need. And also help us build a Seattle City Jail. So I don't know if people know this, but Seattle doesn't have its own jail. And we need one. If we're gonna be a world-class city with booming business, I mean, I wanna see Seattle be the New York of the West Coast. I wanna see Manhattan, downtown be the Manhattan of the West Coast. And build up, and build dense, and have, you know, bustling business. We cannot do that without safe transportation, without law enforcement. We cannot do that if we have a fentanyl and severe mental illness epidemic. So part of the reason I also joined the Republican Party is because I feel like they have left the working class. And I do believe that President Trump's tariffs are going to reverse globalization, bring industry back home here to the United States. And we can take advantage of that in Seattle and create businesses that not only create wealth and increase our tax base, but also create jobs. So I don't think we should fear help from the federal government. And I think it's a mistake to have a city council member that's going to fight the federal government. We have so many problems in our city. We need a city council member who's going to pay attention to our city and work with the federal government, number one, to get the funding that we need and not block it. My opponent wants to block it.
Right.
And see how we can help the citizens of Seattle.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And I actually have one other question to follow up with you about. And my question is, should Seattle maintain its sanctuary city status?
I do not think so. I am for legal immigration. I'm against illegal immigration. I think the city council should vote to stop being a sanctuary city. I do not agree with helping people to break the law, whether it's misdemeanor crimes, crimes associated with drug use, crimes of immigration. I mean, it's illegal to be in the country without proper, you know, there's an illegal way to be in the country and a legal way to be in the country. And I wanna see people immigrate legally. And I think that people who have come here legally also want that. But there's so much political intimidation, and intimidation by people that you get called names like fascist or racist, which I think is so inappropriate to, because I believe in law enforcement. Why? Because it protects people. It protects victims of crime. And my opponent doesn't believe in law enforcement, whether it's on the federal level or the local level. She doesn't believe in arresting for misdemeanor crimes. And it makes me wonder if she's been, ever been, a victim of crime. Once someone is, I have been, I want to have law enforcement to call when I need them, and I want them to come. And I want to use law enforcement to help get people into treatment as well. Without that mechanism...
That's fine, thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And we do really wanna keep the conversation like about you, not your opponent. So if you could just kinda, you know, keep yourself, stay in your lane, talk about you, sell this on you, that's really what we want, if that's okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Alexis, what is your response to the potential impact of Trump-led policies in our city?
Absolutely. The impacts have, are profound. And we are quickly learning this because of the leadership that I've shown on the local level to call for this, and now I chair a dedicated committee called Federal Administration and Policy Changes. This was done in response to the executive order and freeze on federal funding that happened in January. Pretty quickly, we were like, okay, this is really significant. This is a major change in course. We need to establish a dedicated space for council to have these discussions and receive briefings, not just from city departments, but also other levels of government and local experts about what all of these quick changes and big changes in federal policy mean for our day-to-day work here in Seattle. I called for that committee, I now chair it. And since then, we've held panel discussions on immigration, on labor, reproductive healthcare access, LGBTQIA, gender-affirming care. We held a small business and just business roundtable and brought in also the tourism industry. We actually co-convened a session with King County Council, which is the first time that has happened since the bi-adopt discussions first began. So we're trying to have government-to-government conversations about what all of these changes mean, because we need to keep our work moving forward. And there is the reality that a number of these changes will just impact how we're planning our work in the city. Early this year, we had a windstorm that took out electricity for much of Seattle. I wonder if anybody here was affected by that windstorm? That actually qualified us for FEMA funding. We have yet to receive a check, and we are out millions of dollars from that. FEMA policy has now raised the threshold for even being able to apply for FEMA funds to such a level that I don't know if we'll ever be able to qualify as a region for FEMA funding, because the bar is set so high, it's actually above the spending amount that we spent on the COVID-19 pandemic. These are real things that we need to plan for from an emergency management level. And so, but the committee is not just a committee to meet and talk about things, we've also taken up action. We've reconfirmed...
I'm gonna call time, I'm so sorry.
Gosh, there's so much to talk about.
Good job, I know, you get on a roll, man. Alright, thank you. We're gonna move on, and Alexis, I'll be coming back to you. So next, we wanna talk about surveillance cameras. The city council recently voted to expand the city's CCTV network and traffic cameras. You voted against this, although no facial recognition is included with this technology. So we wanna know why you chose to vote against it? And would you have voted differently if there was not concerns over ICE and federal overstepping?
It's a great question, thank you. So a couple of things here. The vote that we took was related to an expansion of an existing pilot. The pilot legislation was passed last year, but the cameras only went up a couple months ago. So the Real-Time Crime Center only went live a couple months before we were then taking the vote to expand. So the case that I made on this was, okay, there's, in the underlying pilot, we said we were going to do an evaluation. We've commissioned a study with a university. We were going to take time to understand if this was an effective technology, if it was helping us solve crimes, if it was doing what we had set out to do. I felt apprehensive about, especially in a budget-constrained environment, expanding a pilot program where we don't even know if it works quite yet. We weren't following the underlying intent of the legislation, and I just wanted to make sure that we actually study and understand if it's working. You know, the point on facial recognition, yes, our technology doesn't have facial recognition on it, but the cameras that are being brought in are new. They're very high-tech. Anytime that this information could be subpoenaed, it can, facial recognition software can still be run on it by whatever entity subpoenas it and gets that camera information. I think it'd be a different conversation if we weren't in the moment that we are in right now with the federal government, where there are real concerns around data privacy. But I think I'd still be lifting up these points to say, let's first finish what we started, let's start with this pilot, know if it's working and delivering those results that we want, and then expand. So I think just from that governance perspective, I still would have had those questions, but I would agree, it would be a different conversation if federal overreach wasn't a factor here. And I worked alongside the ACLU on this. I could still continue to turn to the ACLU if we weren't in this moment with the federal government when it comes to expansions of surveillance technology. But I think those would be my considerations if we, again, had a different precedent.
Okay, alright, thank you. Rachel, what do you think about the increased use of cameras as a public safety tool?
I too would vote against the cameras. I wanna see law enforcement. I don't wanna see surveillance of our citizens. I want to see more police officers. I want the police officers to be able to do their job. I want them to be able to arrest for misdemeanor crimes. Right now, the public drug use law, it has, needs to be amended to allow the police to arrest. I don't know if people know that, that the police are not encouraged to arrest for misdemeanor crimes, crimes associated with drug use, stealing, shoplifting, selling drugs, using drugs, drug possession. And, you know, that is the mechanism that we'll use to help people choose treatment. So the sentence for misdemeanor crime is 364 days. So my plan would be, they can serve 364 days in jail? Or I hope, if it's a drug-related crime, that they choose to go to 364 days of long-term residential treatment. Now, we need to build these treatment centers. We can start temporary and then build permanent ones. But this will encourage people to choose treatment. And, you know, we have a lot, the mayor actually just said this the other day, seventy percent of the people that are addicted on our streets are not from Seattle. So the other thing we can do is, when someone's arrested for a crime associated with addiction, they can't, if they're not from here, we actually aren't obligated to take care of them. And so, they can be offered a bus ticket back home to where they came from, and they can get treatment there. I know, some people think this is not compassionate, but what I think is not compassionate is what we're seeing play out on the streets of Seattle. When we see in Little Saigon, downtown, Belltown, Lake City, where people are using drugs to the point they're overdosing on the streets, the businesses are going out, people are afraid, and the permanent supportive housing. People are dying in there. This drug-tolerant housing, the overdose rate is huge. We must do something different, and that will be compassionate. But you know, I'm a Republican, so I have a spine, I have a backbone, I have the stomach to do what needs to be done.
Great, thank you for your answer. Good, we're gonna move on. So now, we're gonna talk about revenue sources and budget. Alexis, you teamed up with the mayor to sponsor the Seattle S.H.I.E.L.D., a new BNO tax. This will be on our ballots. Walk us through the program in layman's terms and make the case for why voters should vote for it. Uh-oh, Alexis, you're muted, sorry. Beth?
There we go.
Great, sorry about that.
That might have been my bad, thanks Beth. So the Seattle S.H.I.E.L.D. initiative gives voters, Seattle voters, the choice for our city to step up when the federal government steps back from its responsibility to take care of our communities. And in the midst of what I think we can only describe as a fascist power grab, we've seen tariffs harm our local economy, we've seen devastating cuts in, from the Big Betrayal Bill, and we've seen federal agents disappearing our immigrant neighbors off the streets. And the Seattle S.H.I.E.L.D. initiative offers an opportunity for us to meet this moment, to safeguard our city, invest in essential services and programs under attack, while also rebalancing our local taxes, to business taxes, to give ninety percent of our businesses, our beloved small businesses, the relief they need right now. Food banks, gender-based violence services, legal defense for immigrant families, housing, shelter, and support for vulnerable workers will all get support under the Seattle S.H.I.E.L.D. initiative. But we're also giving small businesses relief. So I'm thinking the coffee shop where they get your oat milk latte just right, family restaurant that knows that you want three stars on your pad thai, bookstore that always has staff recommendations on what to read next. To get into some of the mechanics of this, what we are doing is raising the threshold for exemptions for small businesses. So lifting the exemption that is currently set at $100,000, gross receipts up to $2 million. This is actually exempting seventy-six of, seventy-six percent of businesses currently paying business and occupation tax to the city will now be fully exempt. And we've also built in a standard deduction for all businesses on their first $2 million. And this was a proposal that we fashioned alongside And this was a proposal that we fashioned alongside and working with a handful of small, uh, small businesses and small business chambers. But it creates essentially a break-even point for um, businesses at about five point seven million dollars in gross receipts. That's about the break-even point. If you're below that amount in gross receipts, you're gonna be paying less. If you're above that amount, you're gonna be chipping in a bit more. Um, and the about eighty million dollars additional new money coming in from this is going towards, again, these programs that we've come to understand are really under attack right now, um, as we've seen in in these federal policy changes. So I hope that voters will choose to support the Seattle Shield Initiative and vote yes on Prop Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Rachel, for you, um, you are supportive on expanding the police force and having city-owned jails, treatment facility and treatment facilities. Uh, but how will the city pay for this, especially given current deficits? So how do you propose the budget to adjust for that?
Well, we don't need this shield tax if we work with the federal government. So the federal government is bringing down policy changes. Policy changes in the way we treat addiction, which I talked about, moving to abstinence-based uh, housing rather than housing first, which allows people to use drugs. If we change our policy on diversity, equity, and inclusion and go to uh, what's legal under civil rights law, which is not discriminating based on race, gender, and sexuality. All we have to do is not discriminate, and we'll get the money. And end the sanctuary city, work with federal immigration. I mean, I don't see why it makes sense to to use our time, our energy to fight federal government when they are just merely enforcing the law. And so if we stop this, if we get along in line with federal policy, which I actually think is gonna help our city, we'll get the money. There won't be a deficit. The other thing is I propose we reallocate the funds that we're using for addiction treatment, which is, well, not addiction treatment, it's housing first, which costs a lot of money, and move it to this treatment center, temporary treatment center. Using the money that we use on housing first, we can build a temporary uh, addiction treatment center. We can build a temporary uh, mental health hospital, and then working with the federal government. If we change our policies, they'll give us the money to build permanent ones. This is smart. And you know, it doesn't matter, I'm a Republican, but if Biden was in office, I would work with Biden, the Biden administration, to help the citizens of Seattle to solve this fentanyl epidemic and severe mental illness epidemic and rebuild our law enforcement. And as far as hiring more cops, um, Bruce Harrow, um, put that in our budget. And so I'm confident that we're gonna have uh, money to be able to hire more police officers.
Great. Okay, thank you. Um, let's move on and talk about open drug, open-air drug use, drug markets, and known areas of trafficking. Alexis, how do we disrupt open drug use, drug markets, and known areas of trafficking? We want to hear something different, other than the need for more outreach. Uh, and traditional outreach alone is argue arguably not proving effective. Um, in our area here in Uptown, we see daily drug use, you know, really consistent areas where they're open dealing, open using. What's it gonna take to make that stop?
Oh, it's a real and a very serious question, and I I know it's hard on the uptown community to have this happening alongside where we're just trying to to live our lives. And so I think meaningful investments in making sure that we have a criminal legal system that is delivering on actual change is really important. Um, I'm a big proponent for making sure that we have quick responses when it comes to um, first responders. So ensuring that we have properly staffed uh, Seattle Police Department. I know staffing numbers are up, and so we're in a net positive area, making sure that we're delivering on the kind of response that people are asking for is tremendously important. Um, but also making good use of also the care team that has come on board. Um, I'm thinking about how we can really scale our first responder workforce so we can focus our law enforcement on also solving crimes and getting to the bottom of trying to disrupt um, very real um, drug trafficking that that is happening. And so this is why um, I'm a supporter for also scaling our care team, because in my mind, scaling our care team means that we can direct calls that don't need um, a someone arriving with a gun and a badge. Those folks can then focus on solving and really getting to the root of of um, getting to the bottom of drug markets and making sure that we're disrupting some of those things. So um, I'm excited that before council right now, we are talking about expanding and growing the care team in a really meaningful way. And I'm really committed to getting to the bottom of actually getting a delivered response where we have quick responses to given public safety scenarios and the right responses. Um, and then prevention, but then it's not enough to just respond. We need to be taking steps to be preventing at every step of the way. Um, so really getting guns out of the equation is is huge for this. Um, I was down in Olympia this year, um, working on permit to purchase, um, gun uh, gun legislates.
Halt there, sorry.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I know, I get into it.
Oh, it's so hard, I'm sorry. Okay, so Rachel. Um, you bring to the race a very unique experience, which forms many of your positions on how the city should deal with open drug markets and treatment. You've already shared, but if there's more you'd like to tell us about your thoughts on that, we'd love to hear it about your perspective.
Yes, well, first of all, I think it's irresponsible, dangerous, and too much money to expand the care team. Some of these calls that the care team is going to, they actually need a gun and a badge to back them up. Somebody's gonna get hurt, somebody's gonna get killed. These are severely mentally ill um, people that they're dealing with. I see them every day on the streets with various weapons from golf clubs to machetes to knives. I've seen it all. And they're uh, very um, you know, unpredictable, severely mentally ill, and many of them are drug addicted as well. And the care team can't actually do anything but ask them if they want help. It's more outreach that they can't do, they can't say, you need to come to the hospital now with me because you're gonna hurt somebody. But the executive order that Trump just put down changes the commitment standard from harming themselves or others to the inability to take care of themselves. And we see people every day on the street that are not able to take care of themselves. They're not able to say, yes, I want treatment, enough of the time. So we need to expand our uh, our our police force and then build the this treatment, this long-term treatment. So fentanyl and the methamphetamine on the street is stronger than anything we've ever seen as humans. And I have thirty-five years of abstinence, drug-free. I was a drug addict, and I've been abstinent for thirty-five years, and I've spent those thirty-five years teaching people how to stop using drugs. Many of them have had had to use the law to help them do that, how to deal with the underlying issues that make them want to escape the pain of their life, and then how to rebuild their life so they can become productive members of society. So a year of inpatient treatment, and then a year of giving back to the city, learning how to work again, cleaning graffiti, helping to maintain parks, planting trees. This not only helps them have work skills, it also helps them make amends for the harm they've done to the city. And what this does is it starts to repair the heart and the soul of an addict. It gives them pride, and it helps them to be able to, number one, prove to all of us that they can come back out into society. And then I wanna give them housing that's transitional till they get back on their feet, but it needs to be drug-free. The this housing-first failed experiment, where it started in Utah, it's outlawed now because it's failed. And we just have to admit to ourselves we've made a mistake and change policy.
Okay, thank you for your answer. Alexis, I'm gonna throw that back to you. I think um, a response from you on this would be good. Um, so how do you think we should deal with open drug use, drug markets, and treatment in response to how uh, what Rachel was saying?
You know, one of the things that I'm really proud of, and again, I've only been on council about ten months, and um, was really active in Olympia this year, um, pushing for state-level solutions for getting to the bottom of really scaling behavioral health services. Um, you know, I've been, I know you you mentioned some of the outreach teams that that are there, and I think those are really great entry points in trying to start that process of getting folks into um, you know, access to treatment. But so many of the outreach workers that I've talked to and been in community with have said like, I'm, I've gotten this person to this place where they're where they're ready, and I found myself unable to have somewhere to take them to start that process. And so I'm really excited that we're pushing towards more mobile treatment options on the city level. Um, but I was also active in Olympia this year, pushing for more behavioral health services and resources. Went from um, our, uh, and also looking at our law enforcement um, assistant uh, assisted diversion programs that I think are also really great ways to get folks out of uh, the criminal legal system and on a pathway to actual recovery. Uh, I think there's some good examples also on the county level. I'm really supportive of the King County Drug Court Program, which I think strikes the right balance between addressing the underlying issues that have brought people into the the criminal legal system, but also supporting folks in their recovery. And I'd I'd really encourage folks, it's a very tailored and narrow program that addresses folks who were under the influence and have um, committed some sort of felony property crime specifically. Um, but I think it does a really good job at trying to strike this balance of like, addressing the underlying issues, helping folks get into recovery, um, but keeping folks accountable. And so more models like that, expanding and actually making uh, access to treatment really actually accessible is tremendously important. Um, I was a proud champion for the Crisis Care Center and getting the the site over in Capitol Hill, um, because we need another front door to the behavioral health system, but we need longer-term options as as well. And so I'm gonna keep pushing for those resources. They're tremendously important.
Great, we're gonna stop there. Thank you very much. I think you're both gonna like this next discussion. Um, next, we'd like to talk about shelter space and utilization of services. So expanding permanent supportive housing and affordable housing is a shared goal. But do we need more immediately available options such as tiny homes, FEMA tents, conventional shelters, and even managed tent cities? Rachel, we'd like to start with you on that one.
I'm against it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, okay, tent cities, tiny house villages, permanent supportive housing, all these places are drug tolerant. If we don't have law enforcement, it just creates drug dens. It just creates criminal uh, places where people are committing crimes and and using drugs and and dying of addiction. There's no way they're gonna be able to get abstinent in these places. And no, if we can get the severely mentally ill into long-term care that they need, and the severely addicted into long-term care that they need, that's gonna free up a lot of housing. When we change the housing first and permanent supportive housing to drug-free housing, drug-free meaning drugs like fentanyl and methamphetamine, this is gonna free up a lot of housing for people that need it, that that can use it to uh, get back to work and rebuild their lives. So we we must, uh, I think that it's more dignified to give drug addicts a chance rather than having them die in uh, this housing, you know, somebody, I just heard on the street, they call it the morgue. When they go from the tent, which is what happens, they go from the tent straight to an apartment, they know they're gonna die in there because there's no reason for them to stop using. I think the city is enabling drug use left and right. And my, well, you don't want me to talk about my opponent, but the plan is to export tiny house villages, more permanent supportive housing. So every neighborhood that you see that's in bad shape, Little Saigons, the CID, Capitol Hill, during COVID, they bought five buildings, the city bought five buildings, turned them over to nonprofits for permanent supportive housing. They brought five hundred using drug addicts to my neighborhood. That is what's destroying Capitol Hill. And it needs to end, and we can end it, and then we can be an example to the rest of the country. I'm actually very optimistic about what Seattle can do and help all the rest of the cities uh, in the United States.
Cool. Thank you, Rachel. Alexis, uh, do you need me to re-requestion that?
Great, no worries.
Okay, so expanding permanent supportive housing and affordable housing is a shared goal, but we do do we need uh, more immediately available options such as tiny homes, FEMA tents, conventional shelters, and even managed tent cities. We're just kinda throwing that out as an idea, just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the question. Um, we know from the best data we have available that there are an estimated sixteen thousand people in a given moment in King County that are currently experiencing homelessness. And thousands of those folks are outside. Um, we may see them because they're on third half, or we may not see them because they're sleeping in their car somewhere in Georgetown, hiding out of sight, or they're couch surfing. Um, this is tremendously serious. I've known and worked alongside many of folks who have tried to do this work to serve our unhoused neighbors, and we just don't have enough spaces for folks to go. Every night, it's estimated that for family, for the family shelter intake line that's managed by Mary's Place, there are upwards of fifty families that they cannot place every night. I mean, that is, that is astonishing that we can't get to the bottom of of being able to get those folks inside. And so being able to open up more spaces, and I do wanna correct the record on something because a number of our self-managed encampments have very clear and um, very strict uh, sobriety requirements, actually. Um, and I know that's not the case for for every particular site, but we do have a number of self-managed encampments that do have really strong requirements and and enforce that amongst themselves. And I just wanted to do a quick myth bust on that because um, I know that those um, self-managed encampments hold that very dear to them because they they admit that the model of of self-management works when um, folks are in sobriety there. We need spaces in our system for folks um, who are working to maintain their sobriety in in those spaces. And we also know that there are folks, it's it's easier for folks to be able to get to the bottom of or start their process of getting into recovery when they're first housed and at least have that kind of basic need met. And so, but getting to the crux of the question, which is more shelter space, the places to bring people inside, yes. Um, we've had a longstanding issue with self-managed encampments and just trying to find spaces for them to be. We have a, we have uh, the resources right now to stand up a tiny house village um, down in in Brighton Village, um, but have struggled with the paperwork to do it, which I think is a little bit egregious when we're talking about, this isn't even a budget act. I know I'm probably.
We need to stop, sorry.
Thanks, Lisa.
I wish I had a more eloquent way to say. Yeah, there you go. All right, so moving on, um, we're still talking about shelter space and whatnot. Um, here in Uptown, we have closely worked with city outreach teams to find temporary housing, only to find some of the same folks back on the street, as well as individuals who refuse help, like consistently. And people on the streets who actually have housing but kind of prefer life on the street, so they keep their apartment, yet they still have a tent and sleep outside that leaves that unit unavailable for someone else. So these realities are rarely public knowledge. Um, what's your understanding of this issue and how can we tackle this and make it better? Uh, Alexis, we'll start with you. Uh-oh, you're muted, sorry. Beth, she's muted. Sorry, technical difficulties tonight. There you go.
There we go. I'm muted because my cat's automatic feeder turned on, and I didn't want you all to hear the kibbles in the bowl. Sorry. Um, thank you, Beth. Um, this is a question being about how we so I I really appreciate this question because I know Councilmember Kettle brought it up actually today during our our council meeting. And it's something I'd like to to dive into a little bit further, and this kind of speaks to you. Um, I think my work with the district-specific council members, who I know can be a little bit closer to like the the block-to-block matters. And so when he brought this up in committee, I know I circled up with his team, and I'll continue working with this team just to understand more what's happening here. Um, I I'm curious to hear from folks who are doing outreach in the area and know these folks, like what's what's their situation and what's going on. I think we're all wondering why, why is that the case? Um, in the situations that I am familiar with, um, when I've seen this kind of behavior pop up where folks have housing, but they're still coming to a particular space to do something. Um, how I've I've found to understand this is there's an element of community, and folks wanna come to places that are familiar where they where they know people and where their their social bonds are. And so how we get to the root of maybe helping establish new social bonds or creating more spaces for connection feels like one of the solved areas. But this was brought, this is topical, um, Councilmember Kettle brought this up today. I'm really interested to learn more and of course, work alongside the uptown community and problem-solving that. Um, it sounds like you know who we're talking about, so I hope we can follow up after this and just keep working on it.
All right, sounds good.
Lisa, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Alexis, I don't think this is just like an uptown issue. You know, I think this is a a citywide issue. And I think the crux of the come, the the crux of the converse, the issue was acknowledging that people do refuse services, and how do we deal with that?
Thank you for centering that back in, Beth. Okay, I'm proud to, I mean, I'll speak to that point. Um, and we do have situations with folks who are reserving, refusing services. Um, when I've gone out in my career to talk to those folks, um, the responses I've I've gotten have been like, oh, why, you know, they've they've admitted they've been offered a shelter bed. And you know, we asked the question, okay, well, why, why didn't you accept? Um, the most common answer I've gotten has been, well, there's crazy people there. Um, you know, last time I was there, there was somebody who had schizophrenia, and they were just screaming all over the place, or somebody else who was like, I have bedbugs, and like, I just don't wanna go back to that that place when I feel like I have my own thing going on here and it feels better to be here, people who have been assaulted. And and so these are are matters where like, I'm seeing parallel issues. One, the homelessness response system is not equipped to be to be like the robust behavioral health system that we've just, we've lost across the the state. And so this is why I've been really vocal in Olympia, trying to push for more of those those kinds of investments. But two, we need provider accountability. When I'm hearing things about assaults and um, unsanitary conditions, that becomes a question of like, well, tell me about your experience, and what provider was that? I wanna understand that, and that's not to denigrate any of the work that is happening by frontline staff, but we do need to make sure that the services we're offering are welcoming, clean, holistic, all of that. That is what I view as our role as the the public funder. And so I think my my focus on this is really unpacking, like, why aren't people accessing services? It's sometimes it's it's some type of um, behavioral health challenge, sometimes it's just, it's just not a good fit, or they had such a bad experience. They're just turned off, and they think they can res- like, resolve homelessness on their own. But it it's worth unpacking, and and thanks for that follow-up, Beth.
Okay, okay, got it. Yeah, please, I'll throw it back to you. Sorry, I just wanted to kind of like, we agreed this was gonna be a conversation, and this was just one area that we really wanted to make sure it wasn't just uptown. So please throw it back to you.
Thank you, Beth. Rachel, we're gonna ask you the same question. Did you want me to reword, re-reask it, or do you have it? Yeah, okay. So here in Uptown and around the city, um, people and we have worked closely with city outreach teams to find temporary housing, but often find the same people back on the street, as well as individuals who just refuse um, help, which is quite a bit.
Yep.
Um, in my experience, and I do have experience with outreach um, in this area. And people on the streets who actually have housing but prefer to maintain a tent or live on the street or in our parks, leaving, you know, one, that unit unavailable for somebody else that would take it. Um, you know, and then people are camping in our parks and our sidewalks and stuff. So we feel like most people don't know about this, and so it's just not really publicly acknowledged. And so what's your understanding of this issue? And how can we, how do you think we can tackle this and make it better?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I've had the same experience, and you know, just for the record, I don't, I know we can do better than shelters. We can do better than tent encampments. We can do better than tiny house villages. There's a lot of money in Seattle. We can do better, and we can do better as a city. So here's what I know. It's, I I don't believe it's a homeless problem. It's a drug problem, and it's a mental illness problem. And the fentanyl is so strong. I mean, have you seen fentanyl? I know you have, you've seen them in your neighborhood. They're glued to the spot. It's the most tragic thing. All they can think about is getting and using more and not getting sick. And so it's the lifestyle. Part of it is the lifestyle. That's where they're gonna get their drugs back in the tent village. That's where the prostitution's happening. That's where they're going to sell this stolen merchandise. They're boosting from all the businesses, right? And that's where they're going to see their people. We have got to break this up. So the the European countries who've had open-air drug markets and open-air asylums, which we have in our Seattle city neighborhoods, have had to bring in law enforcement. That's the key. So these are illegal activities, public drug use, public camping, lying in the on the sidewalk, selling drugs, prostitution, stealing, burglaries. All of this is illegal activity. So we need to enforce the law as a compassionate act to compel them to either choose jail. It's gonna be their choice. They can either do the three hundred and sixty-four days in jail, which will separate them from the drugs, get them off the streets, allow businesses and people to be safe, or they can choose this long-term treatment, which I really hope they do. Because I know recovery is possible, even from such an addictive drug like fentanyl. I know it is. They have, uh, in Alberta, they're having great results with this long-term residential treatment. And you know, we used to treat uh, addiction this way. The county had treatment centers, and we had many of these houses that had become permanent supportive housing uh, buildings were abstinence-based housing for people leaving treatment. And you know, of course, not everybody's gonna get abstinent the first time, but that's okay. If we have the infrastructure, if we have the law enforcement, the next time if they decide to go out and start stealing and and using drugs, they're gonna get arrested again, and then they'll get another chance. So some people will get the first chance, some people have to do many chances. And you know, I wish, if I was out there as a citizen, if I was out there strung out on fentanyl, which could happen very easily to people, if I was strung out on methamphetamine, if I if had schizophrenia, if I was severely mentally ill, I would hope my city would come and pick me up and take me to jail, and then I could figure out from there, do I need mental health, a long-term treatment center, do I need treatment? That's the compassionate thing to do. What's happening in Seattle right now is cruelty to everyone. Businesses, citizens, and the addicts and the mentally ill. I know we can fix it.
Thank you very much for that answer. That was good. Um, I think we're gonna jump down and talk about the uh, regional approach and plan. Um, so Alexis, we'll start with you. You have a unique perspective, given that you previously previously worked at King County Regional Homeless Authority. With that benefit of hindsight, what did the K C R H A get right, and what did they get wrong? And what do you say about moving forward with a regional approach to dealing with homelessness?
My gosh, how much time do I get for this one?
Well, you know, you gotta keep it clean, baby.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, um, I have a lot to say on my reflections for K C R H A. It's haunted me for a long time. Um.
Are you wearing your cat?
I am wearing my cat. Uh, she.
We should all wear our cats.
I wanna wear my cat.
There she is. Um, things that went right here, so here's where I think there, we. There she is. Um, things that went right here. So here's where I think there we here's what I think has gone right because I think we need to also hearken back to how we were doing things before we had the establishment of KCRHA. From a basic efficiency and also um data perspective, the way we did things before was very wonky and very weird. We had City of Seattle doing their own thing, King County doing their own thing, and then an entity called All Home, which is our Continuum of Care Lead Agency during all the HUD reporting and so on, doing their own thing. So like three different government entities all holding many of the same contracts with the same providers, asking for different reporting metrics. That then coupled with all of our neighboring cities like Bellevue, Shoreline, Auburn, kind of also holding their own separate contracts with a lot of the same providers. And so I think the the thing that is a positive about KCRHA was just the matter of putting all of the contracts under one roof, doing consolidation in the paperwork side of thing, and then also having all of the because all the contracts being in one place, all the data reporting then being in one spot. Um, I think that's better just from accountability to the taxpayer's perspective because for the first time we were able to look across all of the contracts in the system, all of the beds, and basically take a look at like, what is everything that we're actually doing? And it was really eye-opening to me being at at the agency, combining data sets for the first time ever, doing full inventories of all of the different kinds of beds and different programs across the entire county and the fact that that hadn't been done before was I, the fact that that of some of that work hadn't been done before is huge. So I think just being able to have that accountability to say, here's what the sys- what is actually in the system. Here are the four hundred different programs operating across rapid rehousing, transitional housing, sanctioned encampments, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelter, outreach, all of these things. There's a lot happening, but we didn't have that system-wide view. And so I do think that just from like an efficiency perspective, keeping it all under one roof makes a lot of sense. Where they, I think things have gone wrong is the matter of one then talking about what's what's happening and setting meaningful strategy and then taking up that action.
Sadly, I don't think we have time to go down that road. I know, so sad, so sorry. Rachel, I have a different question for you. So after years of discussion about homelessness and the despair on the streets, what seems to be missing is a concrete plan, one with clear metrics, accountability and transparency. Do you agree that this is a shortcoming and we should ask leadership for measurable outcomes, public accountability and transparent reporting?
Absolutely. And I just have to say, I just got a horrible message from someone. We must end housing first. They just, and Roosevelt, they just found a dead child in a housing-first building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We must end housing first. This is a colossal failure. It, we need to end it. And the federal government will give us funding if we do. So we must. It's over. The experiment has failed and we can fix this and we can fix this very quickly. God, my heart is just.
Yeah, I.
And it's so preventable. That's what's got me so upset about it. This policy, we we could change this tomorrow. And 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 that's the thing. I mean, I have seen no legislation from the city council to change it. They could, they could put in legislation tomorrow. Tomorrow, this could be changed. This, the beginning of this, the the beginning of the end of this housing first, uh, these death, ci- city sanctioned death, uh, drug ki- buildings could be done and we must.
Thank you, Rachel. I I feel feel it too. I'm sorry to hear that. So with that said, we're running out of time, so I'm gonna ask for closing comments. And again, try not to refer to your opponent, try to, you know, make your um your statements about who you are and why we should vote for you and what more you want us to know about you. So Rachel, I'd like to start with you, please.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I know that I bring the grim reality to the to the forefront, but I think the the first, the beginning of fixing a problem is to admit that there there's a problem and that we've made a mistake in in the way that we treat drug addiction and the dismantling of our law enforcement and the open-air asylum we have in our city. I mean, I believe that no mentally ill person should be in psychosis and schizophrenia um living at the animal level on our street. And we can fix this. So I'm optimistic about our city. I actually am. I believe we can be the New York of the West Coast. I believe our downtown can be uh a vibrant uh business-filled, prosperous, safe city. I want us to be a world-class city like Tokyo, like Manhattan, and we can do it. So I have uh practical ideas. I know these ideas will work. This is the way that we treated addiction in the past. And I have great hope for our city and for our businesses. So I'm also a Republican because I believe in free enterprise and business and opportunity. And I believe my plan is uh creates independence and prosperity for people. And I just want to say that if you are a Democrat, you can vote for me. If you want to change the way our city uh treats drug addiction and mental illness, if you're a walk away like me from the Democratic Party, you can vote for me. If you're independent. And of course, if you uh are part of the new, what I call the new Republican Party, you can vote for me. So I I hope you do. I'm looking forward to serving the city. I'll be able to work with the fellow council members with King County, with the state. And I think most importantly right now, I'm willing to work with the federal government so we can get the funding that we need and we can join the rest of the United States in what I believe is gonna be a golden age of prosperity and abundance for our country and uh the city of Seattle. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Alexis, we'd like to hear your closing as well, please.
Thank you. And and thank you, Queen Anne Community Council, Uptown. Uh, thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, I'm Alexis Mercedes Rink. I'm a renter and I take the bus to work every day. And I went from waiting tables next to the Space Needle in Queen Anne to working on policy at the U-Dub Tower to now serving you on Seattle City Council, fighting for a city that works for all of us and not just the ultra-wealthy few. And in my career, I've gained a bit of a reputation for bringing people together around solutions and making things happen. And after getting my master's degree at the University of Washington School of Public Policy, I've worked across thirty-nine cities and with over a hundred different organizations on housing and health of our communities. And we had a record-breaking win last year. And in my short time on council, I've been hard at work delivering on what people sent me here to do. I introduced legislation to build more affordable housing and I passed it. I expanded investments in legal defense for immigrant families and I spearheaded the Seattle Shield Initiative. But I'm brought to this work in the first place because of my own upbringing. I am very proudly raised by my grandparents. I was born to teenagers who were caught in the cycles of homelessness, substance use disorder, in prison. But I'm here today because of good public schools with teachers who saw me and intervened when I needed it. I'm here because of my local library and the Boys and Girls Club. And I stand here today, a living testament to when we invest in working families and young people regardless of their beginnings. We can change generations. And I'm fighting for those investments every day on Seattle City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both so much for being here tonight. It really was passionate and I really appreciate both of you so much for for your passion. So thank you very much for your time and good luck with the race. And we will look forward to seeing you again. And on behalf of uh Queen Anne Community Council, Uptown Alliance, Magnolia Community Center, our community, oh my goodness, council, I'm sorry, Magnolia. I thank everyone for joining us as well as our audience. Thank you for your time tonight. All right, don't forget to vote and we'll see y'all soon. Have a good night.
You, great question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, little. Thank you so much.